Testing, testing, testing.
All right, we're gonna call it over to the city council work session for Monday, January 30th, 2023. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for the last time, Jamie Holt, please.
Bill, Claire.
Here.
Darla, look there. Tracy, torch. Here. Bonita Tree.
Here.
Daisy Ring.
Here.
Bonnie, Shamilanis. Here. Scott's back on there.
Here.
And we'll see.
Here.
All right, so we are gonna take us right to four, which are action items. We have three of them. Under A, we are gonna review and update city goals. The recommended action is council expression. Act at this meeting or refer to Figure Six in regular meeting. Uh, these were all taken up at a very long personnel and finance meeting. Uh, and the goals were unanimously recommended for action tonight as we see them. But we obviously can make any adjustments to those as we wish. I know Scott and Tracy were also at that meeting along with Bonnie, myself, and Jeff. So Greg, if you wanna walk us back into your, those stuff you changed based on recommendation.
Sure thing. Um, junior packets, the one that's highlighted in actor colors is what we focused on primarily at that meeting with personnel and finance last Monday. Uh, the yellows, the yellow stuff, uh, yellow highlighted items were comments that had been presented a little over a year ago when we did a review with council December 28th of 2021. And then I had prepared some additional comments as far as progress or lack of it in some cases toward this list of goals and objectives. Those are highlighted in green and were reviewed last week, Monday, with the personnel and finance committee. So I don't know to what extent the full council wants to do a deep dive on those. Uh, I also prepared for tonight, uh, a revised listing of goals and objectives, which totals 10 pages mercifully, um, instead of 20 something. Uh, but as best I could highlight, highlighted in red, either additional language or deletions. The only, I will say, the only deletions I showed on here were where these things hadn't necessarily been accomplished, but there was consensus last week that, eh, maybe that can go off to goals and objectives. There were a number of other things that honestly were accomplishments by way of example. You know, uh, pursue redevelopment of 2023 Washington, making Unimark. Well, that's sold. We have a development agreement in place. It was pretty much consensus. That's, you know, that one is, is done. So if there were things that were noted as accomplished, for the most part, uh, I, I simply took them off the list and did not, I didn't put them on there as strikers. Um, so if that, if that makes sense, uh, I don't know. I was gonna suggest maybe the, the list with the red revisions would be a perfect place to start, but, and prepare to.
I don't have one of those.
Oh, no.
I mean, I'll get one of those.
Okay.
Different from your other one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll get one there.
Okay, I want to.
Anybody else need to copy?
Anybody else need one of these?
A Janda, either.
What's that?
Yeah, Janda.
And I don't, I don't know, Mr. President, I don't, I don't wanna bore down in too much detail, but it probably is best if we go through these as quickly as we can.
I think if we highlight the, uh, the red stuff, I mean, everyone, we did get this out. And if we can delay it if we want, I would recommend not to delay it because I, I know that the city manager would like to get this to department heads so we can start working on this sooner than later. Obviously, as we're down month already in the new year for goals that are for this year, we don't wanna delay that until.
And like, any further, you know, any department heads that have additions or modifications, speak up because we did not meet on this last week. But, um, okay. Um, again, there were six broad goals. First, focus relentlessly on fiscal new revenue streams and operational sustainability. Uh, I take this to be both in terms of our operating capital budgets. Look for new revenue streams to help pay the bills and maintain a generally high level of community services. Uh, A, with its various sub-points, is all about encouraging and facilitating uh, growth in the city's tax base, both new construction, which is good because we can only raise our operating tax levy as a percent equal to our net new construction each year. Uh, and though likewise looking at increase in market value of existing properties, that speaks to our equalized value. And that's an important number two when it comes to terms of, uh, in terms of our, uh, geo debt limit because that's a percent of equalized. And equalized is a pretty good indicator, at least changes in equalization of the health of the real estate market locally. So with that wind up, you know, we talked about marketing, actively marketing available development and redevelopment sites, which are over the city privately. Talked about Sandy Bay Highlands, continued development and marketing. Uh, we are down to probably four, maybe five lots left up there. I shared with the CBA members last Friday. We received an offer for construct from, um, Lake Shore Residential LLC, uh, which has done a couple of spec houses up there, uh, and, and offer at asking price for $232,000 lots in phase two for two additional spec homes. There's a party looking at the lot on Lake Breeze closest to, uh, sorry, to, uh, to County O. Uh, so we're getting down there. So there is another goal here that immediately follows, uh, about seeking a private developer for phase three for either single-family homes or, or PUD. I can tell you, uh, as was in some of the commentary on the yellow and green one, we have reached out to several private developers. Haven't found anyone interested in partnering on the infrastructure costs that can do a planned unit development with private infrastructure. But, uh, some of the same builders that are putting in spec homes up there have certainly expressed an interest in phase three of the project. Because honestly, other than a few scattered lots around town, it's about the only game in town for new single-family construction. I was at, I shared with the committee, I was at the Board of Realtors last week. I don't remember the day, last week, Monday or Tuesday, with Mary Nichols, talking to about 40 Realtors. And must've been Monday, yeah, because I recorded on.
Monday we had council.
Or.
We had the school year, so it must've been Tuesday.
Oh, I beg your pardon, you're right. This is, yeah, Tuesday, it was the, uh, committee. Um, and Realtors from Manitowoc and Two Rivers were saying that in both cities, uh, they need more lots. In Manitowoc, there's some lots left out at Silver Ridge. There might be a couple at Woodridge. Mike Howe is the developer for the new lots next to Lincoln Park, so that's his baby. So there, there's demand there. Uh, I'm getting a little windy. But the other thing, and I think we mentioned it further on here, when you look at the cost of developing lots with full infrastructure and streets, you can quickly understand why people aren't putting up subdivisions because we're gonna be hard-pressed in the next phase to even be in the neighborhood of $50,000 per lot. We're like 60 is what we're seeing, uh, so far. So I think we're gonna need a real serious discussion about to what extent is the city willing to overtly say we're subsidizing the cost of single-family lots. Maybe, maybe with the rationale that when you consider a new house with minimally a $5,000 a year tax bill, 2,000, and that is money coming to the city, that, you know, maybe, you know, even underwriting or subsidizing lot costs in the two to five or six years of property taxes that would float in the city is better than having the land sit there for six years with nothing getting built because that's still zero. But, uh, right now, we're waiting. McMahon is, uh, is our consultant, is trying to, had discussion with DNR. DNR is looking at some proposals. McMahon has that would allow us to use some of the existing wetlands for runoff management. And we're gonna have to prove, prove ourselves to DNR. But Matt and the folks at McMahon, who are our stormwater consultants, have come up with some pretty good ideas to avoid things like a full-blown million-dollar stormwater pond, uh, in order to build the next phase, uh, using some of the natural features for stormwater management. So stay tuned there, but, uh, certainly the, the interest is there. And if you've driven up there lately, it sure is nice to look down the street and see four new houses going up. Did you have some choice answer? Oh, okay. So that's, that's still on there. There are a total of 17 acres remaining up there. The space three we're talking about at 13 to 14 lots would not consume all of the remaining acreage. I don't recall. Man, it's probably.
I think it's 13, 14 lots.
Okay, but it's, yeah, it's probably less than, it's less than half of the acreage that remains undeveloped.
I got a good question. Once, once that project is basically done, where are we going?
Where do we go?
Yeah.
That's, that's a very good question because, you know, I think people have responded well to the setting, uh, that's available up there. There is some adjacent privately owned land that's for sale there that the owner has approached the city at different times. The Fox or East Point property, uh, there's considerable amount of wetlands on that property. About all I can say there. There's certainly open land in other areas, but, you know, out toward the high school, which, you know, we'd love to see private developers doing this, but we, we would've loved to have seen that 25 years ago when the city first embarked on this. I don't have a good answer there.
Somebody, um, not that long ago, you mentioned the property, like, find creative.
Yeah, we, we have had discussion of the so-called Ralph Schrader property, the old Schrader pit back there, which is pretty much re-vegetated, doesn't look much like a gravel pit. That may have some, and it's adjacent, albeit on a very different location than the.
Well, then we can get really creative with your designs.
Yeah, yeah. So that might make some sense there. Um, we did modify the next bullet point because two years ago, we were, a year and a half ago, we were talking about making sure that the Abbey Ridge folks got the remaining three duplex condos that they were required to build, finished. Those happened. I think two have sold, three or four are still on the market. But just generally, it's, it's certainly worth keeping in touch with them to encourage full development of that planned unit development because there are three additional sites beyond what the development agreement required. There are three more sites for development of duplex condos. Under, uh, market rate housing, both condos and apartments with them, this is on downtown waterfront sites. Seems appropriate to specifically talk about carrying things forward with the Confluence LLC on the former Eggers Downtown plant site right down here. So we have a March 1 date for, for them to get us a site and architectural plan, so we'll see where that goes. Uh, there was a general consensus, we've had a goal in here for a couple of years of, uh, providing funding assistance for and undertaking the housing market study. We have some work that Raleigh Point Associates did for us a couple of years ago. It seems that at least on the single-family front, there's some actual market activity we can point to. And, um, I don't know, there's, we got a lot of competing priorities. This didn't seem like one right now. I, Elizabeth, I don't know if you and I discussed that at any length or not, but it, it just seems we, the housing, lack of a housing study doesn't seem to be the hurdle that was a couple of years ago, perspective.
Right, they, I think very the issue is lack of housing available.
Yeah, period.
So that seems to be right.
Yes. Um, I do have on here, um, uh, so it wasn't specifically cited last time to continue work with Scott Crawford Development, the Milwaukee developer that has proposed the affordable housing, our apartment housing development, West River Lots on the former Eggers West site. We do have the TID 17 development, uh, excuse me, we do have.
We have the project plan.
I, I'm sorry, I should not have said development agreement there. That was a misstatement. Subject, the TID 17 project plan, we do not have development agreement. But this, uh, this would indicate an intent to keep working on that project. Thank you, that's good. Uh, the Transform Two Rivers Housing Improvement Initiative, that was the name that was hung on the, uh, efforts to spend, uh, money from our TIF. She might remember, we can extend the life of TIF districts by one year to make, uh, for, for affordable housing purposes. I think we've got about $140,000 set aside. And right, we, the CBA and council have given their blessing for a program with low-interest loans along some major entry corridors into town for, uh, loans to assist with external rehab. The interest in that hasn't been robust. There was a mailing done to all of the property owners in those corridors. I think there was one inquiry out of that from a property owner. Uh, we may do well to look at redeploying that money. Now, that could be applied toward West River Lots. We've had interest from one other senior affordable housing project already in the city, which doesn't have air conditioning and could use some HVAC work about possibly helping them. I'm not saying that's, that's a must, but we certainly should look at redeploying that money. I don't believe there are any tight timeframes within the statute on how fast we need to spend it after setting it aside, but it doesn't do any good just sitting in a font.
What, what was the amount set aside?
It varies by TIF and I, I'm pulling it out of the air, but I want to say we have about 140,000 set aside right now. So you basically can capture, you can extend the life of the TIF for one year and capture one year's worth of revenue for this purpose. So that would be one back to the CBA. Uh, left comment in there on the bottom of page one. To continue to make use of TID 13, that was for the Culvers that never happened at, uh, Washington and 22nd. TID 8, the old high school TIF, and TID 12, Hotel TIF, to encourage redevelopment activities in the downtown area. To the extent, uh, each of those has a half-mile radius of the TIF boundaries within which funds can be spent, they can be used for direct grants. It could also in those areas be used in the partnership we have to do with Main Street on the side lanes. Anything, anything else on page one? Page two, um, out of the Woodland Industrial Park, Implement TID 14, which was adopted two years ago now. Uh, last year, our goal there was to work with new land business prospect that had expressed interest in, uh, building at the park. Mission accomplished there with all energy management, Peter Slager, uh, $175,000 TIF grant, as I recall, $250,000 city loan. We do have a couple of other businesses that, uh, have shown interest, uh, in doing some expansion out there. One of them, an existing business, and the other company that actually reached out to Elizabeth's office just about three weeks ago and has shown interest in building new on a property south of Woodland. So in both of those cases, they've, uh, indicated an interest in, in whether it's TIF assistance to help with expansion or, or new construction. Uh, in the second case, it would probably drive the need for some street extension on the south side of 310. I, I don't have a map to pull up, but on Brown's Drive right now, uh, you just get a little bit past Brown's and, uh, Lake Shore Industrial. Uh, you're headed south on the street end, it's just gravel, you know. There, there are utilities for about another three, 350 feet of water sewer to the south. But we'd need to get electric down there further and, uh, uh, extend the road. I think Stormwater's taking care of the existing pond, uh, out by the house, the lady's house.
Fran?
By the Franz, just son of the Franz's house. So a couple of nice prospects out there. And as you're aware, um, we do have one other party with an auction on a nine-acre lot out there. So that's TID 14 at the industrial park. Uh, continue, uh, as staff, uh, and then bringing folks into council. Certainly it's appropriate to meet with prospective developers over the course of the year, several key sites. Uh, yeah, Hans of the Florist, former Eggers West, which we talked about elsewhere, Eggers East, former Paragon site, again, we sold it. We stand ready to help the new owner with further development. And likewise, there's now about a six-acre parcel listed for sale on Columbus Street that, um, that our Dunkey's firm broke off from the Parrot Parcel. We've had some discussions with Art and his Realtor about what kind of development might happen or not happen there.
Is there, is there a price on that?
There is, I don't recall. Lock me in.
I'm sorry, what, what was the price?
Price?
Dunkey's out.
It's 225, 225,000.
Yeah, it was a very good price.
What did she say?
Oh, 225,000 is the ask.
Oh, you're not talking about the price.
Yep, yeah.
About 225,000.
So these, these have all been on the list before, various properties on Washington Street. I did add the vacant former Elks Pub on 15th Street over next to the Collystone Hotel. That is now in the ownership of the bank of.
Commons.
Thank you. I was forgetting Commons. It's where, where the really great Italian restaurant was that closed down. Just can't remember. Commons, yeah. Uh, then the former, uh, northeast corner of Monroe and 16th, the vacant lot that used to be Jenny's Resale, but was bought back after she bought it into a C store that, that at least thus far hasn't happened. Southwest corner of Washington and 22nd Streets, which had been the proposed, um, call first location, probably still one of the prime commercial redevelopment corners in the community. Uh, the former M&amp;M Restaurant and adjacent properties, there have been proposals there. There have been, uh, seat conditional use applications approved by the Plan Commission and Council. It presently is not under contract anymore. So keep working on that one. You know the one, it's, it's a Washington Street property generally, but the other one, of course, would be right across the river from the M&amp;M, Chris Derrington's building, uh, office building. Probably worth listing separately because it is a waterfront parcel. Uh, the Barrows Waterfront property behind Kurtz's, uh, the former Ralph Schrader property on Garfield, that was one that Darla mentioned earlier. The undeveloped portion of East Point subdivision, which would be the Fox property we mentioned earlier. Sites in our two industrial parks. And I also added, this is a heck of a building in there, it sits, uh, the vacant former Union State Bank on Waken Avenue. Um, the next bullet point was to, and that this parrot's what we've had in the last couple of years, strive for at least 3% annual increase in the city's annual equalized valuation, uh, '22 to '23 and ongoing. We'll know in August of this year what the city's equalized value, uh, change was for 2022. The last two years have been great. Of course, uh, 2021 saw an increase of over 7% and last year, 19% in the city's equalized value. So that reversed a downward trend that started in '09, the '08-'09 recession, continued through the loss of Hamilton, and has only ticked up the other way the last three or four years. Uh, B, we'll keep in there, we've not pursued a specific strategy here, but recruit businesses can take advantage of available water and wastewater treatment capacity to help stabilize or reduce rates for those utilities. Now, as was pointed out in last Monday at committee, frankly, any development, whether residential, commercial, or industrial, is gonna use some utilities, and that's a net good. Uh, there are certain, we have great quality water in, generally in great quantities. Some may have frazzled ice from Maine, right? And wastewater, well, it varies. We've got some loading issues right now with our biochemical oxygen demand or VOD, but hydraulically, we still, I think, are in pretty good shape with the amount of wastewater we intake in.
Didn't we cite a penitentiary for that goal as well?
I did add that on the next page here, we, yep, yep. Um, you're flushing all that stuff down the toilet. No, just kidding, kidding.
Right.
Fine, fine. Um, okay, so the utilities. Uh, also, we set a goal of increasing the city general fund unrestricted fund balance to 2.2 million. Uh, that was our total fund balance two years ago, but because of deficit fund balances in the utilities and some of the TIFs, the available unrestricted fund balance is actually a negative number. Last two years, we have seen the, um, fund balance improve by at least 200,000 a year, and the unrestricted balance has improved better than that. I don't have exact numbers, but because of improvements in the utilities and the TIFs. So, um, those are, frankly, when we shared those in the, I'll call it the green and yellow sheet, we seen some pretty impressive improvements on the finance front in terms of our general fund balance and the utilities, which I know sometimes that means we all pay more, but we're all, we're all owners of those assets as a community as well. Uh, specific item D there was about the water utility deficit. And, uh, what I'm addressing there is the cash deficit in the utility. Part of that reduction in cash, the cash deficit was made possible with an interfund level that's getting repaid. But the fact of it is that deficit cash fund balance has gone from nearly $2 million at the end of '19 to, uh, just over 700,000 at the end of '21. And next year, 2024, is the block away here, we see a big drop off in debt service for a lot of funds. So it should be, should be improving, uh, and have a better clip with that. And then capitalize on the sale or development of city-owned properties, which are referenced elsewhere. You have Sandy Bay, Eggers East, industrial parks. Any questions on page two? Then page three. Pursue acquisition for redevelopment of vacant tax-free parcel fronting on the south side of 12th Street between Adams and Monroe. I did have a map of that I was gonna share, but I don't want all the feedback noise we're getting from the projector. I don't want all the feedback noise we're getting from the projector. That was originally going to be the location for the third building for the Lake Shore Park Apartments. That redevelopment activity was delayed while some cleanup was done on that part of the site. Very good, yes. Scott is holding in on it now. It fronts on Twelfth Street for a whole block, it fronts on Rogue Street to the, to the west and on Adams. There is, though, the corner of Adams and Twelfth that is a separate parcel, and that's owned by the same owner as the apartments. So I've reached out, left phone messages a couple of times for the owners of the apartments, whether it's the city acquiring the site or enabling, if those folks would like to do more housing, enabling that, it just seems to be a good thing to do. This is one of those properties that now is sufficiently tax delinquent, more than three years tax delinquent, that the county could assign, the county can take it through in rem foreclosure for back taxes. Our county typically doesn't do that if there's been any history of environmental problems, much like the old Unimer in Washington. When we discussed this a little over a year ago, unlike twenty twenty-three Washington, or it's like here, you can take it, it was, well, we'll sign. Last discussion with Bob, Zulower, and County Court Council was, well, we think, and maybe went to finance committee too, but we think twenty thousand dollars would be good too, because there's some inherent value here. So certainly worth looking into again, I bet. There are a couple of other properties I'm not going to address in open session, but that are approaching three years or should hit three years tax delinquent this year that might be worth talking about and closed as far as a strategy to acquire for redevelopment. Again, not to have the city playing an undue role in land assembly, but I know sometimes people get a little hat up about that, but the fact is, with the ability to accept an assignment of that in rem foreclosure rate, there are some protections the city enjoys as a local government that can help facilitate, much like it did with Unimer. Hopefully, we see that nicely renovated this year and can point to that as a shining example. It beats the heck out of it just sitting there and deteriorating. Continue to try to educate, talk at council and educate the community on some of the fiscal constraints, which are very real that we face. We're headed into a pretty interesting time with this legislative session. See what, to see what happens with the budget, the governor and the Republican leadership are seriously talking about, and you heard it from Shay Sorham on a recent visit at council, seriously talking about stepping up the commitment to funding local services. As always, the devil's in the details, because some of the things they've been talking about are, well, yes, but we want to provide incentives for consolidation or privatization, which is a lovely concept, but as I suggested to our state rep, maybe local control would be good, and you guys could figure those things out, and whether they're best for Two Rivers. The other thing, of course, is how does that money get distributed? Even if it's a bigger pot, we're one of the shared revenues is a redistributive program, and we realize per capita we're at the higher end of the spectrum, the spectrum as far as it may be, we get. So, you know, we don't want to see a bigger pot of money than the city getting less as a result.
So he, they, the legislation at present is interested in community getting, sharing services?
That was my understanding, there were some discussions about building incentives or making some of the money only available if there's shared services or privatization. I've only heard that at that level. I haven't seen anything about why we should any bills yet.
There's a reason why people don't want to get together. Even this county has all these little birds with all their little presidents and things, and there's a reason they don't want to join. Because the smaller you are, the more you get stepped on, is really what it is. I mean, how do you answer, I remember when Manitowoc, just for those of you who don't know, wanted their fire department to join the SARS. Guess what? They were eight hundred thousand in the hole when they came and approached us. So now who's going to be the fire chief? Him? Or one of theirs?
And how responsive is that agency then to the needs of this community? That's all.
Of course, maybe he doesn't want to be the fire chief. I didn't need to do.
I got worried because I thought you were pointing at him. Don't put the fires here.
So, so yeah, that one continues to bear watching. I know that, but again, the governor parroted to some extent, what we heard from Shay a few weeks ago, we've given the equivalent of one percent of the five percent sales tax, or twenty percent of those revenues, which would be a pretty again, statewide would be a pretty big lift, but if all of that money goes to Brookfield and MacMon and those poor communities that don't get as much from shared revenues, and not to the Two Rivers and Malloy's and Manitowoc, and yes, Milwaukee's, sorry. Hitting Milwaukee's almost a full-time job sometimes. But as a result, sometimes the bystanders like Two Rivers get shot.
Who would have the final decision?
Well, we have divided government right now, so, you know.
The legislature would have to put it in a bill and approve it in order for the governor to
I wonder if.
Sign off on it or veto.
Well, then there's also a veto pin that can scratch up perks.
Either or.
I haven't seen a lot of things that give me hope for reasonable, rational dialogue.
They would have to start with the legislature, because they, at the end of the day, have to sign the bill. The governor can't sign something that's not there.
Legally, Wisconsin municipalities, I've been down there like four years in a row. Covid pretty screwed it up, but four years in a row in the lobby. Well, one of the things was the Big Bucks store issue. I remember that was a huge one. But this seems almost like this is something that if we did go in through the LWM.
Yeah, the league will undoubtedly need to, a call to arms on this. It's gonna be tough for the league too, because they have municipalities that are in very different circumstances on this issue.
Because this would be a really important one.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it truly is. Again, Wisconsin's had a strong, that's why we created a state income tax in like nineteen eighteen, because taxes are too damn high at the local level. And you gotta lose twenty percent of state GPR spending twenty years ago today, it's about seven percent. So it's a relative priority in the budget, it's true. Okay, and then highlight cost containment and efficiency measures achieved by the city in its twenty twenty-three budget are frankly any tendency achieved. Any questions on page three?
Where did the correctional facility come from?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that, I was trying to figure it. It came from the discussion last week at Personnel and Finance, and Jeff first brought it up, he's not here. I think it arose out of the expectation that someday soon, because there's been a lot of discussion, the state may agree on a replacement for Green Bay Correctional Facility. And that, I'm sorry, because that does warrant discussion.
And I'm just curious, how has the company been doing from that work? Do, I mean, we don't get to tax the state on parking a prison in our community, but we benefit from the jobs that would come from prisons and whatnot.
Utilities.
Utilities should be high, tourism would be high.
I have no idea.
People coming to visit their incarcerated loved ones is tourism.
It's gonna be like a zoo setting, you know?
I'm not sure how many will be stopping in to buy local wear gear.
Yeah, I don't like to stop right in to buy that stuff, no, maybe that does generate a lot of traffic.
This is our gift, though, you know?
I see a scenario where the locals, bakers are selling more cakes and the harvesters selling more files. That's from the localies.
Well, if they can do something like that, then why don't we also think about at some point, I don't know which committee would would be looking at it, but if you're looking for something that uses water and electricity, why not the larger indoor vegetable works? I mean, if you go to the supermarket and you look at tomatoes, almost all your tomatoes come from Canada. Do you think they're growing this time of year outside? No. They grow them year round inside hot houses and such. That uses a lot of water and electricity.
Well, hydroponics.
Well, hydroponics.
And they're, but that plant is seed, they're on the side, so he got his, uh, mandate to make responding.
Yep.
Yeah, we're, we're just a perfect setting for that because of our access to water and the kind of sustainable energy we do have right now.
I don't think we'd turn anyone away that wanted to come and invest in that. Of course not, we just know at the same time that they're probably putting on bids to see who wants a correctional facility. You had highlighted and said, hey, it would be something.
I don't think we, the city doesn't own enough industrial park property, I don't think, I don't run the space.
Oh, we have like a couple hundred acre.
I thought, okay, on the brown side of the, we.
Well, we got a hundred and some, and it's, it is cut up by large overhead transmission line. We, I'm not being a Debbie Downer, but we have a hard time creating a twenty acre contiguous site for anybody.
So it may present some challenges, right?
You know, I'm wondering with like the hydroponics and everything, because that's that's huge if we talk to Grow It Forward, because they do that and they're major in killing.
They're offering a subscription service now for weekly settlement agreements, which is way cool.
But I mean, that would be, because any question they have about this technology, she would know that it's worth looking at if I knew.
Yeah, and I always hope that those two brownfield sites over on the west wing would be perfect.
I mean, I just don't want to see, don't pick up hitchhiker signs along our highways.
I have no idea where the state is on that, there, I've heard discussion that, you know, ultimately, there could be a replacement for the pond and Green Bay, it would be somewhere. There'd be a lot of competition for that, so. Honestly, I don't see this one unless it's really directed that we're out there spending a lot of time and effort on it, as much as maybe monitoring what's happening, and I I don't know, because there's no plan right now to replace Green Bay, just since it gets older, harder to staff.
I think if you look at the Correctional Institute, that takes up a lot of property.
What have we got on our old landfill? Isn't there practically on the old landfill?
That's not that big of a.
If you arrive at prison, you get a sinking feeling because it's sinking.
Yeah, but think about tunneling out, that would certainly be a deterrent.
Oh, yeah. The hydroponic.
Sorry to get us off track there.
Yeah, commercial scale hydroponic, whatever, green might be a good one to add. Could be a sub under the water wastewater. I've often wondered, because we have a generator for an awful lot of hot water that just gets discharged to the lake, not too far up the road either, warm, clean water. Hydroponic? We did have, we did have one party that looked at the Paragon building and wanted to grow something hydroponic, but it wasn't. Eat it or smoke it. Yep. Makes the neater spin.
Yes, it does.
So add something on hydroponic gardening, and maybe I don't know that the intent with G was solely to take advantage of our water and sewer utilities, I'm not not sure. Anything else on page three, other than to add some large scale hydroponic operations as possible? Page four. Goal two, deliver outstanding city services and innovations for sustainability and to support future growth. We talked, we've done some things, we're guaranteeing improving a feedback mechanism, reinvigorating Citizen Academy. Historically, Two Rivers has been very successful, we're a national leader way back when with police departments, initial Citizen Academy, later expanded. Certainly, we can look at that, it typically is something geared up in the fall and had rave reviews from the people that participated. Implement regular, this one we fell down on, and maybe this would be a good thing, committee thought, at least, implement regularly scheduled community forums and participation by council, city manager and department heads, and the idea here was to get out of city hall, maybe do neighborhood meetings at Caning School, McGee School, different locations around the county, or, excuse me, the city. Reedsville, around the city, so. If council's interested in that, it'd be, it'd be a change in venue. Maybe, I know there's some folks that think we ought to just look at more virtual. I still think there's something to be said for face to face, I don't know. And for the police department.
If you feed people, they will show up.
Yeah.
Often in the sandwich.
Very, yeah. Yeah, which maybe that's why people showed up for coffee with Coke, because they got coffee. So that was suggested that we revisit that and consider other similar issues by city departments. Technology, blah blah, we talked last week about things that have been accomplished, like adding you know, Badger Books and the implementation of the property tax software, both of which improve customer service and efficiencies. Be explore Two Rivers website, use that, try to make it an even more powerful tool for both residents and visitors. Other digital and social media initiatives, we had talked two years ago about a maiden Two Rivers website. That may have merit, but just, there has been none to do that. And this is kind of grabbing one technology thing, but continue to add cameras in parks and public spaces to enhance public safety, deter vandalism, and prosecute violations. There are other, other technology areas that occur to me. In this year's budget, we provided for some new permit software, this is, is that tomorrow? I saw somewhere on the calendar, you and Adam.
It's a training session, so.
Okay, great, so, you know, new permitting software. There are things in all of our various departments, is there anything, though, that council definitely wants to see on this list as far, as far as new technology implementation, maybe a broadcast and live streaming system that works?
You know, I know that we've talked about infinitum, about having a city newspaper, you know, and first of all, that, well, it's expensive, but you pay for it through advertising. But just try to find somebody, an editor, somebody to run it, has been impossible, because I know we looked a couple times. I think it was through Main Street. But instead of doing that, you know, have it have it so we can, not the city website, but a separate site that's strictly news, and have your columns, and have your spotlights on different businesses, and, you know, something where we could maybe do something jointly with the high school, make it more of a paper. Because that would, that would be a lot easier to do that than paper.
Yeah, that is a tough one, because there's a big void there, even if even if we didn't know still the HTR was objective and thorough. There ain't nothing out there now, you can read a canned article about something happening in Eau Claire and the obituaries. And the city's legal ads will be up tomorrow. On the other hand, being told what's going on by a governmental unit isn't a full substitute for an independent media.
Right.
That's, yeah.
It really, it really is a lot of work.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of work.
I mean, we have a hard time keeping up with the websites that we have. Not saying we don't do a good job on it, but I don't think anyone's going to be exactly what we want to do.
But are you advocating for trying to recruit news sources to come in? Is that what you're saying, Darryl, or are you saying that something?
If we can get, whoever we can afford. And if that, everything is it's the same company that owns all of these, and the other ones, we don't care.
There, you know, there's still some small independents like the Valders Journal, I think the Denmark News, although they may have some affiliates, it's a a true local paper.
Maybe look at it in the future, but, because we've got nothing.
And the scary, I'm sorry, maybe I'm wrong, the scary thing about the digital world is you can basically be a hauling down with high speed internet, you're a credible news source.
Well, I think people are, I think people are smarter to start looking at the source of some of that. And, you know, sometimes, I've always said the HTR can be a stronger publication, they don't have to be the fastest. Just simply be the best, the most thorough news source, you know? If they could invest in being thorough, that would be fine. Because they're not going to be the fastest, but just be good, you know? They'd assume be the McDonald's of news, you know, fast and cheap.
You know, I've talked to Alyssa Schaefer about doing something like that, because she knows that it's going like down forever. You know, or actually, it's at the bottom now.
She is.
You know, it's down in wastewater plant. But the thing is, she said they wipe her hands a lot of times too. There's things that she would like, love to write about, and they.
There's not the advertising revenue, there's just support.
So anyway.
Yeah, I think we're all sorting through this, it's the sort of thing that gets headlines at the national level. We see it locally, and I, I don't know how we emerged, it's gonna be something different than we're all used to. Still churning, I wish I had a better explanation. But yeah, people are starting to figure things out, they may have to read six different, so, from six different sources on the same subject and use their judgment. Um, what else we got there?
See.
Yeah, veteran from the public of city services and infrastructure and their contribution to development, the, this is pretty traditional style, service group presentations. I liked what we did when we had a part-time communications coordinator, maybe we'll get back to it one day. But, um, some short video informational pieces on your, your city departments. The only one we ever produced was about water, it's kind of interesting, short, to the point.
Yeah.
Still a worthy goal. Don't ask me to do it next week, but. And actually, our Sean, our, um, social media consultant has, when he's in town doing, uh, doing some of the business profiles, which we had very good feedback on, we could expand. Because we do have some good stories.
Where is he from?
He's living in Chicago area now, he was from Iowa.
A little bit of Iowa.
He comes up once a week?
Generally, once a month, but this month it'll be two times, I'll be here next week doing more pictures.
He's got other Wisconsin client relationships.
Yes.
Oh, this one, Darrell, this came out of your last EAB meeting. Pursue development and implementation of community sustainability initiative led by the EAB and involving community partner organizations. That, that's a fairly brief statement, but the thought was, if we want to not just tout Two Rivers as a sustainable, green community, but make that a reality, it doesn't mean the city has to make all by itself a science project out of this, we don't have the resources. But we're existing in a community with a lot of resources, like Woodland Dunes, the Arboretum, uh, Grow It Forward, which is, gets management based, but is offered to help out with the Front Berry Gardening Initiative, uh, that maybe for starters, it would be helpful to call together a meeting of these various groups and say, what, what can we all do for each other, Woodland Dunes? What are you doing with habitat restoration along the lake? I'm sorry, I'm going blank. On tree planting, because we're coming from the EAB with a recommendation for a bigger grant program funded by the utility and our tree budget for helping people plant trees on their private properties, well, gee, could we be coordinating with the Arboretum when they do their annual tree buy, which they've extended to the community? We're missing some low hanging fruit when it comes to, uh, more of a green or sustainable.
It would be a group.
Yeah.
And, because you don't wanna keep reinventing a wheel, and plus the fact, I mean, I, I think all of these different, um, organizations would be very willing to work together. It's just a matter of really coordinating it and, you know, sort of some upfront work. But I mean, that could be in the future, you know, at least maybe just flesh out a strategy for it. And maybe get in touch with, like, we talked about this already, get in touch with them based on interest.
Yeah, now, you know, after that meeting, I talked to Nancy Nabeck of Woodland Dunes, well, a few years ago, she was on Mayor Schmidt's Sustainability Task Force for the city of Green Bay. And they developed, developed a plan for a network of pollinator areas in city parks and along trails. Well, we've kind of started into that with Woodland Dunes out on Mariners Trail, discussion and advisory record about, um, the Shota Park, especially the westerly part of the park, who seem to be interested in proving habitat there rather than just long grass all summer long for no apparent reason. Except to keep it short, uh, so are there some things we could do that wouldn't be a huge expense, wouldn't change, wouldn't require additional staffing, would just be smarter?
So we're, we're looking to spend taxpayer dollars to put trees on individuals lots on every single property?
That's the proposal, yeah, to, to assist in funding that.
Let's see, now, just right now, there's a WPPI program, and this would just go ahead and, um, kind of augment that or add to it, it wasn't a, it was not a huge amount, but.
Well, this proposal is five thousand from our commitment to community dollars, we have to withhold from utility bills, but matching that with money out of our tree planting budget, which raises a policy question that council may not agree with, I apologize.
Well, I mean, if we're doing that, I mean, are we gonna help them replace grass and everything? I'm just curious, I mean, I understand it's a tree planting program, but how much do we invest in people's private houses and their private property? That don't add to tax value at the same time.
But you know, in the long run, I mean, if we do initiatives like that, it just makes our community more attractive to people up there who are, you know, um, they're well-known persons. And if we can show that we're progressive and we're looking at one of these different things, which are becoming more important as time goes on, you might not see a, a return on the investment right way, but in the long run, it could be very, very, um, advantageous for us to do something like that, we have the tree, uh, yeah, the tree budget, it's not a lot of money. And who knows, people might not be interested.
The thought was to, yeah, we've had for years this tree planting program, notably to encourage deciduous trees, preferably on the south or west side of your house, so they can be shaded in the summer. Leaves go away, you get solar gain in the winter. I think the last three years, the best year we had, we planted, we helped plant five trees, it's been modest. Now, could, could those numbers go up with better promotion by the city of the utility initiative? Could very well be, uh, EAB was interested in whether the city could augment that, some grants could, instead of a max of fifty dollars or, or fifty percent of the tree planting, be up to two thirds. Again, I think this goal could apply whether that program is approved or not, and that'll be on your next agenda, but this, uh, this is a broader kind of thing.
Correct.
If not, we can certainly plant unimpaired on their streets, we have a lot of places.
Well, I mean, I think that's where we, I thought that's what the goal was gonna be, was when we did like construction and stuff like that, that we would help decorate up the terrace and residents wanted it, especially as trees had to get ripped out due to construction, not going to private houses and saying, hey, you wanna tree your backyard? Well, well, what color most of the cost of that would be? Well, again, the guy.
Apparently, if you want, that they have to plenty up some money, too.
What was proposed, they'd have to put up the third, and then the maximum cost to be a hundred and fifty dollars per tree, so. Again, that's, that's a policy question, it's, could go either way.
But something like that, I mean, just like front yard vegetable garden, I don't, I think we're beating this horse, too, we start small, see what happens, and then take it from there. It's pretty, I don't know, I think it's worth looking into, um, I don't know, but. Our parks and market do, what is he?
He's not here, that's.
Okay, he's got a wonderful presentation that talks about, you know, how it's gonna benefit us and what, um, government's working in. I wonder if he could do that for us, it was great, it answer, it would answer all the questions.
The dude's administrative assistant will pass that along to him, so.
When, when we do a, uh, we do a street, then we put trees on terraces, do we take the money out of that fund, or is that part of the whole project?
We've taken, you know, we've only been doing that in recent years to any extent, but now that's come out of our tree planting budget. We haven't, haven't included it in the street project budget and, no, and we don't special assess for the trees, I can quickly add to.
It's not, it's not, because you're in the, in your terrace, like, if the city takes one down for construction, can they say, no bother, I'm gonna get back up?
Yeah, although we have tried to, tried to stick to our guns on that, because you, you know, if all of a sudden, it's about the, here's a street tree, this person doesn't want a street tree.
Yeah, that makes a lot, yeah.
If, if as a community, you value those, and we're a long way from the traditional tree-lined streets, because we haven't planted trees, but we'll listen to those arguments, but we'll strongly encourage.
Well, I think so, I mean, tree.
I mean, somebody has to rip those leaves, and that's gonna be mean when you plant a tree there.
You're, you're right.
And I probably not.
So, I mean, there's some times where you can't plant trees on terraces because of pipes or whatnot. Could, we could maybe in that situation, give the person an option, put it in their yard or somewhere.
That might be a qualifier for this program, you know, if you've got a terrace that's too narrow, or, or you go up ten feet and you've got ten feet, you go up fifteen feet and you're in some heavy duty wires, that just described half of our city.
I mean, that makes more sense, though, yeah, because they can't put it in their terrace, it's a reconstruction.
It promotes the urban forest in another way, there's not really a right one. It makes life a little more complicated, but that could be done.
Okay, yes, we really need that one to the special, we allow to need for, for a two-line goal, like I wanted in discussion.
Page five. Uh, the goal, uh, has been terms, strategic community development, uh, secure the former Hamilton property. I don't know, I put by twenty twenty-four year end, I don't know if that's realistic or not, we know that Hamilton's given their latest, and we probably ought to re-up it each year until the city owns it. Uh, again, we've borrowed the money, we have it, um, and Thermo Fisher wants to sell it, we just don't wanna buy it while there's outstanding issues pertaining to environmental. And I don't know to what extent their environmental liability coverage is paying the bill for some of the things that are going on.
Well, they're probably relying mostly on our trees.
It's kind of an understanding, so I guess the thought here is just, for goodness sakes, keep an eye on that, because as frustrating as it's been, that's where this town could really turn to the future, it's a significant redevelopment, some beautiful redevelopment. Um, next, uh, B was continued, emphasize continued redevelopment downtown, and then the downtown waterfront. Again, uh, more specifically, work with Confluence on the former Eggers Downtown site. We do have a gravelled phase two of the South Great Water Pier, the, uh, trail that snakes behind DPW, but we changed that to working to get that paved. Uh, if you've never ventured back there, it's pretty cool, because instead of just going back, you can move past the back of our Public Works facility. I think we have it elsewhere in here, there are still, we are still looking at grant possibilities for perhaps, uh, improving that shoreline by the utilities in DPW and eventually getting some of the activities that are in on the water out of there, like concrete reprocessing.
It, it's screening.
Screenings?
Screenings, where you don't have to look at the actual public shot.
Uh, I thought it was screening so you couldn't look at Lake Michigan.
Depends on what the sign.
Yeah, depends on your perspective. Spoken like a Public Works guy, uh, he's better than I am, he's being sarcastic, I taught. Um, uh, continued grant, uh, program to help fund facade and sign grants, both downtown, where in the mid district, it can be a partnership with the Main Street, and along major commercial corridors, where we then have to look at city TIDs or economic development funding examples like the High Lift, which I'm told is gonna be opening within a week, I heard that from the entrepreneur's ad, I can say. Uh, or, uh, Renee's, yeah, Renee's, uh, treats out on the drive, where we're able to help. Uh, blah, 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 complete Central Park West three sixty-five project, that's kind of moved along from a vision to becoming a reality. Hold a midsummer dedication event and aggressively program that space as a hub of downtown activities. If I could just very briefly there and follow up to last Monday's work session and discussion at Stage. Public Works got a quote today for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars from Vinton as a change order to detail totally demolishing the old stage, landfilling all of the structures that needs to be landfilled, and hauling the, um, broken concrete down to the city yard for processing and to add to the seating view down there. So my correction to that was, sign it for God's sakes, and the, the other nice thing there is, if, uh, then Vinton would plan to be here, like, it's twenty eighth of February, and a week later, Caning Construction, the sub who's building the pavilion would like to mobilize and start work. So that could push our completion date substantially earlier than what we were banking on, so that's, uh, that's all good news. And Elizabeth hit the send button, reflecting the completion of a lot of work and filed the vibrant spaces grant application today for Central Park. The next one is a discussion that council members and, and I had during the holiday parade this past year about, uh, well, the next two points, uh, revisiting, not necessarily as a big city spend, but the next phase of downtown Christmas decorations and lighting. And also working with Main Street and other community organizations to keep improving the hometown Christmas parade, which weather blessed it, but people did agree this was an outstanding parade this past year. So.
I learned a great deal, so I think we've got a, some good opportunities to grow that, so.
Yeah.
Support it one hundred percent.
Yep, and honestly, that, that has the potential to further solidify the idea of actually shopping locally, uh, in the holiday season, giving a boost to our downtown. Um, it does note, this is the last set of goals, that the city manager, excuse me, council rep and city manager, uh, continue to actively participate as members of the Main Street Board, continue to cooperate with Main Street, and this is a revised listing, unless it's in red. First point, expanding the streetscape and signage to better incorporate the twenty-second street corridor as part of the downtown, twenty-second and Forest, twenty-second and Lincoln. Welcome, you are in downtown Two Rivers, ain't it pretty? Thank you, uh, I think that came through loud, we were at that joint game bid board in late November, early December. Continue offering facade and sign grants to businesses in the Mid District, promote public art broadly in the downtown area, and fill vacancies in downtown storefronts. And we repeat again the importance of new market rate housing, rental or condo, downtown, downtown waterfront. We repeat ourselves a bit here, but also talk about the restore Two Rivers housing initiative in the context of the new law. Anything else on page five? I'm sorry, I'm talking so much, just trying to, and they're tired to come and auction you. Uh, page six. Emphasize development, redevelopment investment along Memorial Drive and all along the Lake Michigan shoreline south of downtown. So it's not just about highway oriented, it's about making better use of that water edge. Carryovers include, the first one, I think, very good, if time and funding would allow, a master plan for upgrading the Spirit of the River's wayside and the adjacent lands is acquired by the city. Can't hardly miss it now, it's bright white and has a logo on it and a light that looks like a freight train coming at you, well, we're gonna work on that. Pursue funding for rehabbing portions of Mariners Trail into rivers that weren't resurfaced in our last grant. We resurfaced the easy stuff last time and didn't deal with what runs between the guardrails and the fence. That fence is getting older all the time, too, and it's gonna be very expensive to replace when the time comes, so we should keep, keep punching on that, look at grant opportunities, partner with Friends of Mariners Trail, all that good stuff. Develop safe crossing to Mariners Trail at twelfth Madison or Columbus, be happy if we put the word and in there instead. We need to keep thumping away on that, and plans are moving ahead for the twenty twenty-five Memorial Drive resurfacing and the resurfacing or redecking, whatever we'll call it, bridge. Uh, we have run into some things that I find frustrating with DOT in that they're saying, we need, if we were to, are to do a combined bike pet facility crossing the bridge by McDonald's, which we've been hoping for, it has to be a minimum of twelve feet wide from crash barrier to outer railing, uh, to meet design standards for the state and the feds. And that would mean sacrificing a traffic lane on the bridge, ain't happening. Uh, we, I'd like to at least pitch a fit and appeal that to the extent we can, even if we have to say. It's a really wide protected sidewalk, and oh, by the way, we still let people ride their bikes on sidewalks and tier.
We do have a meeting coming on Thursday morning, DOT meeting, and it's all.
Good. Well, as we, you know, we built the ability to provide some local funding into the TID twelve plan, and I don't know about you guys, but Mariners Trail and our, our trail system's a huge asset, and that bridge is a problem.
Yes.
You don't feel safe on the sidewalk, I don't anyway, uh, because people ain't, no, um, nor on a bicycle, either on the sidewalk or the traffic lanes, there's just not a real comfort zone, so.
It's not even safe for seagulls.
That's right. Bonnie, Bonnie and Warner Knox did in a sea dog on the bridge.
And he flew into an oncoming car, the seagull.
It's a great story. Da, 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 da. We haven't done much on this next bullet point, my bad, but we, we need to move ahead with that purchase agreement, see, and, and pick up that hundred foot wide railroad corridor that parallels, uh, Memorial Drive. They had come back to us over a year ago saying, yes, we would sell it for a hundred thousand plus reimbursement of railroad's cost of filing the abandoned and procedure, which might be twenty.
I have a question about that bridge. Is it, are you more concerned about the traffic going across the bridge or people going across Washington Street?
Both, yeah.
Okay.
Both, I mean, I think to get safely across the bridge and then it's listed further on here on the other side of the bridge where the liquor store used to be, getting on the off street trail, which that section needs to be completed. But likewise, you know, if we, even now, we've got a trail segment in front of the library. We encourage people to use it, but to cross over there, something the bridge is dangerous because of the bridge and the curve.
It's dangerous crossing it.
Yeah.
How expensive is it to put? Okay.
First of all, to have it sloped on a one to twelve, to meet ADA, you probably have to start it in the pier or close to it.
Yeah.
I, that, that would, that, I'm sure that would exceed a million dollars if we could do it.
And you're going to go higher or not?
Yeah. Yeah, million doesn't buy what it used to.
I always thought it was interesting that at one time there was a tunnel under the knee. You know, I don't know that would be someone to consider.
Apparently, yeah, from Lake Shore Park to the area by the lighthouse. Must have been a little moist sometimes.
Well, I mean, I thought that was cool.
Yeah, it, it would get very moist. I remember it as a kid. And not only that, but I don't know what in the world was on the bottom. I remember one time my mother sent us all a little inner tubes and she poked. I think there was like sometimes broken glass and stuff because it was cement.
Sounds like a lovely experience.
Yeah.
So, but you know, we've got this trail. It's a huge attraction. There's from downtown to Taylor Street, about by the hospital, there's no controlled intersection. We all know that. And the solutions, probably the best solution we've heard are random rapid flashing vehicles, RRFPs like by the Manitowoc Library and by Maritime. And even that's not, that's far from perfect because of those issues that you, you don't know, you don't know what's ahead until you're just about on it. Madison would probably be easier that way, but there's more pedestrian activity at twelve and Lake. We can, we can segue into that in our discussion with DOT on Thursday and maybe some other safety or pedestrian enhanced. But money.
Could we get some roundabouts? Roundabouts, anybody?
Yeah, by McDonald's, tear down the waterfront. Okay, that was facetious if I can easily realize. I'm sorry. Develop, I'm sorry, develop and pursue implementation of plans to upgrade Lake Michigan shoreline, again, adjacent to city public works and utility facilities and on south of the lighthouse. Long term. E, invest in critical infrastructure, leveraging available funding from non-city, i.e. state, federal sources to maximize investment. Let's complete this year's scheduled projects. That's a good near term goal. Good neighborhood meeting last week by Matt Scott. Continue to aggressively pursue funding for water service lateral replacement throughout the city. Develop plans for effective use of the ARPA funds, working with the county to make, to take advantage of their generous offer. And as I recall, we have to have those funds obligated by the end of twenty four and spent by the end of twenty twenty six, at least given the current rules. And Matt, you want to share, I mean, we, we were concerned for a while that we weren't going to be able to offer twenty five hundred dollar grants like we have in the past for private site LSL. Kind of an update on what we think is coming from the state.
It sounds like we will be able to get funds, but it'll be retroactive. So funds that will basically will have front the cost. And then we will give reimburse in twenty twenty four dollars to pay for this year's.
Is that in part because the state still needs to get their final plan approved by the feds?
Exactly why, I'm not sure, but yeah.
I think it's more just that they're delayed on implementations. You know, they're trying to redo this whole program and they just don't have it finished yet. By the time they roll it over, it's going to be so far from full that most people won't be able to use their twenty three funding in twenty three.
So it puts the city on, on the hook for it.
Just kind of correct. And our, our thought was, and the, and the communication has been to assure people the twenty five hundred dollar grants will be there because even if something blew up with the state's program, we can spend our ARPA allocation for private site LSLs. We prefer not to if they're other sources, but we have to give those people on Lincoln Street some assurance about what's coming their way.
Oh, yeah.
Ultimately, it may be better than the twenty five hundred, but if we can at least guarantee we'll do as well by that neighborhood as we have other recent projects, that's probably the best we could.
Well, that's kind of a failure on the state. Maybe they should have that already done.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, I think we're seeing a lot of that. It's forcing a lot of money into, trying to force a lot of money into the system in a short period of time. The capacity to spend that money isn't on, to even get it out the door isn't there. When it hits the street, we're all worried about what it'll do to.
Right, but there, there's people that actually struggle to pay for these. And then just to say, hey, we're not even sure.
Yep.
If we're going to be able to help you or not. And I mean, they have to plan in advance for stuff like this. It's not fair to leave them.
I agree entirely. And that's why we probably have to at least make a pledge with our ARPA money as the backstop. Don't think we're going to have to go there, but yeah.
At least we have a backstop given that ARPA money, but yeah, that's not, that's not fair to these people. I mean, they want to let out of the system. It costs a lot of money to do it. We don't have people that have a lot of money and stuff, and that's not fair for them to have to suffer.
Even with the twenty twenty four dollars, they're putting federal stipulations that we now have at the scale for iron and steel requirements, but now everything else has to be built America by America. And which are going, because that's an unknown program. Their anticipated costs are going to escalate with construction projects. Before this year's Lincoln Avenue project, we're actually bidding out the private side service work as a separate contract that will use the federal monies, which will potentially come in higher than anticipated. But as such, we hopefully will get additional dollars for that project as well. So all the free money comes with significant stipulations required, and so.
And I mean, that makes sense, but they've had this program in the past. It's not like they're running this up for the first time. That's the frustrating part. It's, this is in the first year of the program.
It looks like the new program will realize more of an advantage on funding ultimately because they're directing their money to lower income communities. And sadly, we, we are one of those, where if you're not, probably they're only going to fund that max forty nine percent of private site LSL replacement.
And we're okay with that one hundred percent right now.
We're hoping, hoping for that hundred percent. The other thing that will be on your agenda next Monday related to infrastructure funding is the state local agreement for the work on Emmett Street. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Stay tuned on that one. It's, once again, it's, it's federal money. It's not a great deal anymore. Okay, we'll talk. Late breaking. Okay, you know what? While we're on this, it's not about funding, but I mean, it's close enough, just informational. You may see a whole lot of digging going down. If you go through the McDonald's drive through anytime this week, you might see some digging just beyond there at Seagull Marina. Andrew, you want to talk about what happened this weekend?
Sure, so there is a river crossing that runs from the water plant and it cuts through the Seagull Marina, kind of through the campground. And then at forty fives, over across the river, kind of right in front of the boat launch at Seagull Marina and heads right over to Coast Guard Park. So that river crossing in the parking lot of Seagull Marina actually failed over the weekend. We had a massive water main break there. We will be starting repairs on that tomorrow, but it throws a lot of water. It's really icy down there. And you'll see equipment there for potentially a decent amount of time, probably most of the week.
It's not going to be cheap.
Yeah, we're going to have to dig it up and actually see where it failed because the parts that we need for that size water main aren't readily available locally. So we're probably going to have to get the parts from out of state as well. Before we get, buy them all and get them sent here, we want to verify what actually failed.
It's an HDPE plastic main, depending on what standard you're using, twelve or fourteen inch diameter that was pulled under the harbor when, in tandem with the reconstruction of the seawall and things over at now Coast Guard Park. You might remember there was an old cast iron main that we were going, we're going to keep as a duplicate facility until Michael's put, puts sheet piloting through it. But this one, about three years ago, maybe four years ago, there was a, the intersection over by the picnic shelter at Coast Guard Park erupted, brand new pavement because my, my layman's take, it didn't shear or anything. It pulled apart because that plastic tends to, over time, pull back. It's got some memory to it, is my best take. It may very well have done the same thing at the, whatever you call it. We're at a junction with the other main here at the.
Yeah, that's one of the problems with boring that pipe under the ground. There's a lot of times like the river crossing, we have to board underneath there. But as you pull that pipe all the way through there, it will have some elongation factors and over time will compress itself back to the others. Unfortunately, with the length and stuff that we've done on that project, like Greg mentioned, a few years ago, it's shrunk enough on one side of the river to cause failure. We believe it, it did the same thing on the other side.
So exploratory surgery, it's below zero. So the good news is they're able to shut the main off and it didn't, nobody's going without water service.
Yeah, everything's going up on twenty first year.
Yep, where we had a major water main break a few years back when it was leaking under, it was leaking into the river. It took a while to find it. That means in good shape. So anyway, just a public service announcement there. Bottom of page six, implement city of Two Rivers tourism program under the direction of the Room Tax Commission post MABCB. You would remember the, you know, if you looked, last year's list had a lot of stuff from a year and a half ago when we were still trying to reach an agreement with our neighbors on continuing our arrangement with the MABCB. That regrettably is history now and we're moving forward. Excuse me, the Room Tax Commission last week gave its blessing to finishing up the bylaws for a five oh one C six tourism organization. We already have the F, the federal ID number for that. And gave the blessing to advertise for new tourism staff one point five FTEs to be funded through the Room Tax. For instance, ten of those would be city employees with city benefits, which we think will be, will be helpful as far as improvement of a clear understanding of those are Room Tax funded positions. So stay tuned. In the meantime, we are cooperating with our neighboring cities. We're not totally in silos, but there's, I would say, some good communication going on regardless of what you read about the new visitor guide on Facebook. Nobody can say. Address location and facility needs for a Two Rivers visitor welcome center, both near term and long term. Room Tax Commission's budget for this year did build in provision for another contract with Main Street for its downtown office to serve the visitor information function. I was fully expecting that to get finalized and put together long term. You know, we've got some really wonderful plans for the old water pumping station. We've had some dialogue about federal funding with the Shipwreck Coast Marine Sanctuary folks. If they're consistent with what they've expressed in the past about deploying resources in each of the four major cities along the sanctuary, that, that could bode well for our funding, some funding need to stay on top of it. And design and implement new system of wayfinding signage to guide visitors to community attractions and destinations. It's not in the Room Tax Commission's budget right now, but the last two meetings, members have talked about possibly funding that, seeing that as a, as a priority need. They'd have to amend the budget adopted for this year, but they are carrying about a hundred thousand dollar balance forward into the current year. And I, that's one thing I really do like, how Manitowoc updated their wayfinding signage. They're fairly attractive and effective. So stay tuned on that. And then generally, in pursuit of all of the above goals, make strategic use of development incentives, state and federal grants. One thing, guys, that I, I jotted down today because I was reaching out to the Corps of Engineers about where we stand on. They're looking at further harbor improvements. We don't have any mention of improvements to the harbor opening on Lake Michigan, which we've been lobbying for forever. So I would suggest adding lobby federal government for needed investment in Lake Michigan harbor infrastructure to address shoaling and storm surge issues. That ain't nothing new. It's, it's been a problem for a long time. Anything else on page seven?
Didn't they say they were going to come up with a plan on that? Didn't Tammy Baldwin involved in something?
Yeah, there was, not a lot of money, twenty thousand dollars put in appropriation in the last year for the Corps to do a, to do a determination of federal interest, which basically they take a look, gee, who uses the harbor while we have a Coast Guard station? We have commercial fishing. Is there a federal interest in further investment in facilities? And that's been real frustrating because. Yeah, in years prior to that, we had Senator Baldwin's office notably asking for earmarks to make the improvements. And then we were told, oh, no, first you need, first you need this stuff. So that was the reason for my call today. We have, and along the way, jurisdiction over this side of Lake Michigan got transferred from the Detroit District Office of the Corps to the Chicago District. So it's a whole new cast of characters as of two years ago now. So, and I can't, I left a message for the planning director today. Then I Googled, it was for the chief planner for that office. Then I Googled her to see if I had an email address and found an article where she retired on January twenty third. So found another live human being. Filming love. We, you know, while we've been waiting on this, Senator, now give Tammy Baldwin a lot of credit. She was able to get a earmark to rebuild both piers and key line. Now, that doesn't involve going further out into the lake or modifying the entrance, but holy geez. We need that if we want to be serious about this being a sustainable recreation, to some extent, commercial harbor. It's crazy to have to, to drive to that harbor every four or five years. That should definitely be on our goals list, so I'm not sure I wasn't before. Page eight. Relates to a goal of growing a vibrant, sustainable, safe and connected community while respecting traditions and history to attract residents, visitors and new business. It seemed maybe a little, some of the softer side issues. Oh, okay. Address the need for additional tools to address deteriorated woods, something.
Sparked properties?
Proper, thank you, physical property. Consider licensing an inspections program for all residential rental properties. We're going to have to do some research there because the legislature did make it tougher for cities to have annual fees, for example, for rental properties. I think there was good consensus of last week's meeting. We need to get more actively involved in the rent, not, not short term rentals. We already got these registration there, but knowing more about what's happening and addressing some not so good conditions to some of our rental housing.
Wasn't one of the, you know, one of the goals that if we do, let's say that somebody owns a rental property and they go out for vacation and they don't have like a property manager and something really bad happens. You know, if we know about it, we have like contact information, just we want to know, you know, who owns it, who's responsible, you know, just in case there's a big problem, you know, otherwise we might have to address it.
Well, that was, that was done with the short term rental, vacation rental ordinance. That would at least be a starting point.
Oh, I never really do like apartment apartments.
We have not, we have not as yet.
You know, it's only for like Airbnb's.
Short term.
They did that for a break.
Right.
And that's exactly what we did.
Long term, I guess, okay.
Don't the uh, doesn't the fire department inspect rentals?
Not if we have a board.
Technically on a complaint basis. Wonder why they have that.
It's not, they do commercial building.
I was gonna say, I know they go commercial building, it's commercial, so maybe that's why.
But maybe that's why you get inspected.
Yeah.
Because the twenty five day one we're on is gonna be different.
We lost our acting chief. Call.
Tony has a emergency. I just got a. For contacts and stuff, properties.
Is that a city thing?
No, it's a county.
I just got a letter, uh, of all, um, contacts or something for, of my shopping place or the bar, I don't remember which one.
Might, might be in the county emergency government.
I didn't, I thought it was just in case someone happened like for. Like I remember we got contacted when, there was an issue when the pipes broke by French East and we weren't in there anymore, but it was on a contact list. If they're going, if the county was going through and trying to make their contact list.
I don't know if that's a separate dispatch then. Unfortunately, we just lost the fire chief to a call and I know the answer to that. Uh, the other one we had, so we, we want to spend some more time looking at. The other thing we touched about was a licensing program for hotels and motels. I think recognizing that s- some of our hotel motel properties pose challenges. They may not fit neatly or in terms of our nuisance ordinance, because it isn't like it's the same people creating the problems. And there was the very recent news account out of Lina or Fox Crossing, one of the Green Bay, I was gonna say Appleton area communities. Where due to repeated violations of law at a property, uh, the jurisdiction yanked their license. And uh, the thought was if we need some more tools to address our larger transient housing facilities, I mean, our hotels and motels. Much likely now at least have our, our licensing, the short term rentals, it may be time to look at that as well. Not being too specific, it's not all of our hotels, but our son will have fairly frequent calls per service. So, uh, shoot. Uh, yeah, B, C and D kinda go together and I, you know, D right now, Mr. Turkin. Uh, develop design standards and incentives for investment in historic properties. There's been discussion of that at Main Street's Design Committee, there's been consultation with State Historical Society, S A. Um, a current topic, I, that's still valid because it's coming back at that committee. Uh, develop design standards and incentives for new development and redevelopment in downtown and downtown waterfront areas. Probably fine, especially if they're looking for city help. But then D, which right now is shown as going off the list. Develop and adopt a local historic preservation ordinance, including creation of city historical commission. I shared a concern, I think it was shared by several of council members last week. Uh, where two rivers Wisconsin is right now, I think it's great to provide incentives to go back to. Historically authentic appearances on the outside of our buildings. I don't know if we're ready for any kind of stick. And with all honesty, we've got some great historic properties, we're not seated for it. And unless it's coming as a hue and cry from property owners. I think this has got the potential for some blowback if it's seen as the city imposing. It's Florida's requirements or Main Street trying to use the city to impose requirements. And I think in the dialogue over the years, there have been people who were saying, you ought to make them do that. I don't, I follow council's direction, I don't know that we wanna be part of that.
I don't. I don't mind seeing it happen, but I think it should be on their own record, uh, us shoving a gun there and throwing what they should do with their property.
I'd, I'd like to bring dialogue between, you know, council and the Main Street businesses. And board, uh, as, you know, we talk about that as community, you know. Uh, because I think that's a challenging topic. Uh, because, you know, there are people who wanna buy a building and develop it as they say, see fit. There are others that do wanna buy something and, and take advantage of tax credits that might help in historic recreation. So, um, I'm, I'm learning as I go and hearing from people, but I, I think one of the things that we can look to is some of the. Uh, recent building developments in our downtown, um, haven't necessarily been of a historic recreation nature. But have really beautified the buildings in our downtown. So you look at the Wager to Reconstruction, you look at the Cool City, uh, you look at what's gonna be happening at Oaklands. Um, all of them are gonna really make the downtown look a lot better. Uh, but are they going back to the real historic look of the buildings? Uh, no. So, you know, I think what we're doing right now is working very well.
So I'm not hearing any real opposition to that. That, that doesn't mean they're not standards, doesn't mean there's not adherence.
I, you know, and with that all said, I know there's a group of buildings in the city that represents our federal landmarks. Which I think you can't just do whatever you want and follow certain restraint.
Well, we've got the, so the French East Side Historic District, which goes back to the eighties maybe. We've got the Central Park Historic District, this building community has St. John's Schrader's, a bunch of other buildings around Central Park. And then another one for St., the St. Luke's complex. My understanding of it, you better not be destroying or screwing up a national register building if you're gonna be using federal funds. But being on the register doesn't preclude vinyl siding your historic brick building or tearing it down. The only thing from a city standpoint is if we get a demolition permit application. Like when, when St. John's School came down, because that was on the national register at the time, I think. There's an obligation to notify the state historical society and they have the right to come out first and document, the structure photo document, I assume. Uh, before it's downed. Now we could have, now Elizabeth used to sit on the Piers Historic Commission, you know, as a local unit, we could have much more. Owner's requirements are significant. Some cities do, appear to probably be a good example. I just don't.
I wouldn't wanna be there.
I don't see us there. And actually, I think state statutes still mandate that local communities have an historic preservation ordinance, we have not had one. And it's never been a reason for a grant application to be, I've never seen any teeth backing up that state requirement. So, okay. Um, haven't done it, but it would be good to review and update the twenty thirteen bike and ped facilities plan, if you ever looked at it. It's a pretty darn good document, we got it courtesy of a D O A staffer who took it on as a project and actually came out and worked with our community. Update the twenty fourteen park and open space plan. Um, I've talked with Matt about this, so I know he's in agreement. We, we did just, the advisory record board and staff went through an update that was approved by city council in February of twenty two. I don't think it was an especially thorough, uh, review. It certainly should be looked at anyway to incorporate what comes out of the show to park master planning. And uh, I think we can do a better job, give it some real thoughtful consideration. Uh, so that remains as a goal. I guess it actually would now be updating the twenty twenty two park and rec open space plan. Uh, I'll defer to people that are involved in it, but foster development of local arts communities and a component of community quality of life and economic development. You look around the country and certainly the arts, whether it's visual or performance arts can be a big factor. I'm not sure the city government can force the development of the arts, but rather can be supportive when, when we see things happening. Uh, certainly council's been supportive as far as the friendship table by artist Fiala from Czechs, from the Czech Republic, I'm sorry, it'll be installed this summer. Downtown mural project with Main Street and Sister Cities Committee. There's a proposal to put a mural on the side of Rip Carey's Homestead Outlet Building. That's sort of the Village Square streetscape from the West Litsa. Um, that would be fine if that can be a sitting facade, Main Street facade and maybe Sister Cities Committee initiative.
Yeah.
Um, it was discussed briefly at Room Tax Commission last week and the consensus was. Doesn't really fit as a room tax tourism thing as neatly as what a downtown mural facade, sort of thing.
Yeah, my own question is the, the, uh, is the building decided on, you know, is that the most visible or is it because there's a connection there or, you know. Uh, so something discussed.
I hear you, I hear you. Um, and then generally support downtown murals as part of the joint facade program with Main Street. It's a facade, you can see it from the street, so it's a mural. Um, page nine. This relates more to city human resources, which are what we rely on to deliver our services. Keeps most of the same goals about recruiting and retaining employees. Encourage professional, professional development. Highlight professional development and accomplishments of employees through reports of council meetings. Recruit and retain, lay the groundwork for more merit based adjustments, not doing that yet. And succession planning, including for the city manager position. One thing we've, we've recognized certainly this year, you know, our, our benefit package is at the selling point, it used to be. We, last year or two, come through the budget with a whole hide, we significantly increased our deductibles and maximum out of pockets on our health insurance program. Uh, we're seeing it, I know Jamie's hearing from prospective applicants and, and current employees. Uh, that, that, that one, uh, they fill in the hurt, we used to. We used to have lower deductibles and the city funded in contribution to the employee H S As, savings accounts. Uh, budget realities have caused us to squeeze there because. With both the unionized workforces in police and fire and our non-union people, the benefit side, we can make changes. Uh, but sometimes there's a difference between making the math work in the budget and providing a competitive wage and benefit package. So, um, we should certainly try to take a good hard look at our health insurance notably next year to see what we can do. To alleviate that, I don't know how you're gonna reverse that trajectory, medical inflation and a workforce where we've got a big. Still a big component of retirees that we're covering. Uh, they're, at the very last minute last week, I had Jamie sit in on a meeting with the school district and their insurance consultant on a. What could be a fairly innovative program, at least for direct care and access of employees. Uh, for that, uh, those family doctor type services while still keeping the umbrella of coverage for, for major medical events there. But uh, there are some things that would work and some things that wouldn't necessarily. State health insurance program has been brought up, that one might be a challenge because of the various networks involved. You know, right now, we've threw incentives and because of the biggest provider here, we're very heavily invested with employees at Aurora. I think it's over eighty-five percent of the spend that our insurance program makes. So, you know, don't necessarily want a program where they're steered to provide, I would say overnight. But the school district has gone through some pretty branching changes with their program. But it's also impacting, I can't speak for them, but I'm sure it's impacting their ability to recruit and retain good people.
I don't know how cost effective it would be, but you see Green Bay with some of the large companies where they have like their own healthcare. So that they almost have like a clinic that they go to, I don't know how it exactly works if they team up with the providers. And pay that provider to have a clinic for their employees only. But I would say the city with family coverages, maybe even trying to team up, I don't know, in kindergarten, with the school district, I think you'd be easily. Able to like look at that and maybe bring the stuff.
There's at least been some very preliminary dialogue there, okay.
At least, at least from the going in for strep throat or flu or colds or COVID testing stuff, you could really cut down that and then. Try and focus on the insurance part to be on board if you got no ask.
Does it take away your ability if you wanna incur the deductibles and out of pockets to go off to Maine or somewhere else? Certainly needed, but for the routine stuff, bringing those costs down. So. So I would like to add something there about, you know, this goes for all of our benefits, we're taking a really hard look at our health. Program to see if there's a way we can improve it. Uh, page ten. This relates to brand identity and brand story. I don't wanna beat on that too much, but both for tourism and economic development. We should certainly be drawing on resources from that branding effort. It got pointed out to us just last week, but with the update of the web, city website and the Explore Two Rivers website. We no longer have links to any of the videos that were done for branding and that was an oversight. We've now added an icon on the front page of the city website called our brand. It takes you at least to, I'll call it the master video on community branding, but we need, we need to. There's a lot of value to be had yet from those resources and we need to refocus there. You know, when Kurt Andrews was heading up the marketing, branding and marketing committee, he was a bit of a taskmaster on that. But it was thanks to his focus that we all got focused on and got as far as we did. Uh, we, we need to revisit those things, it'll be easier to do that when we have some tourism staff, so. So. And leverage community and regional resources to help promote our brand story. It does come down to a question frankly, to what extent are these other entities wanting to play ball? Or do they have much that they bring to the table? I'll say it right now, TRBA will be here later this week, they'll probably have five or six people from real honest to God businesses. Could be a lot of city folk, could be a lot of not-for-profit folks, folks from the school district. We need more active engagement with the business community, I'm not saying that's their fault or it's the city's fault. But the fact is. We don't, other than through their, some, a good number of businesses involved in Main Street, we don't have. TRBA and what it used to be as far as engagement with the community and the city. So maybe we need to do something to tick them off. No, okay. Uh, so that's, that's the list. Any thoughts, additions, additions?
Well, let's, we should probably take a motion because we should, uh, do something with this altogether and then.
And I'm so sorry to talk to you.
So long, because I'm sticking here myself, I can only imagine where you're at.
I do have a question.
Sure.
If, when you were having all the meetings to try and come up with those. What, what, did you have any sticking points or any of these things that were really, um, difficult to consensus on? Did it go pretty smooth?
It went really smooth.
Okay. So nothing really stuck?
No, I mean, I think we had viewpoints pretty much from everyone, from Greg to, to Bonnie, to Jeff, to myself. Even, even from Chrissy and Scott, even Mark Bitter was there, so he, he was.
Yep.
Yes, he was.
He was another one that. C D A meeting told that he made him leave.
Yeah, she did. And he was, he was all in that prison.
It, it is kind of a continuum, you know, saying, yeah, we've knocked some of these things down, we've made progress on others, some we haven't, not a lot of changes.
So we, yeah, we kinda struck out some of the stuff that, that we do, we had kinda completed. And then we kinda tweaked some of the ones that haven't been completed or just needed to be shifted, like three sixty-five's kinda been completed, but it's max phase and Christmas decorations. And uh, we went, a welcoming party or the opening party, so to speak, became a goal. Um, I think that's kinda where, where we kinda worked a lot of it.
Yeah, Adam, rip through with anything that was redundant, because there was like.
There was a, it was a, it was a pretty long document, it was like twenties of pages, I think we had the other day. I mean, some things were like, like Tracy said, were, we repeated it several times. So, okay, let's just cross that out, it doesn't matter. Beat it over the head, once was enough, we got it.
Very cool.
Um, are the city objectives and goals, is that, uh, city staff led to create this or is it a council led it? Or is it kind of a working of both that created this?
Kind of just.
Both.
When it started, it just started, I think when I got down in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. When we started creating the goals, it was pretty much per, personal finance committee. Nobody.
Yeah, but it's, this, it's not like this hasn't existed for a couple of years, it's just personnel and finance adding or suggesting subtractions. It's been, I mean, the idea of having goals and things has been in existence for a while.
I mean, it's helpful to be able to cite these things before applying for grants.
Oh, that's.
It's helpful if we bring something back to council that's consistent with your adopted goals and.
Well, I, I think, I mean, it's a work plan, you know, essentially an opportunity to prioritize things. And say, hey, are we spending a lot of time working on something? Well, I, I think, I mean, it's a work plan, you know, essentially an opportunity to prioritize things and say, hey, are we spending a lot of time working on something, is it in the plan? Well, if it's not in the plan, then either we're wasting our time working on it or it should be in the plan, you know?
And it's good for the department heads to see too, because I think that they got a lot of stuff in here, whether it's wastewater, you know, I mean, water, electric, oil parks, correct? DDW, everyone's got stuff that, that's in here, Elizabeth, uh, uh, Development. Everyone's got pretty much something in here that we need to work on and it's good to get this document out to them so they can see and say, hey, we do need to take a deeper dive on this and kind of check this out for us.
Yeah, it's a guidance document that puts in your metrics so that we can say, yeah, look what the city did this year.
And then do we, do we share these with some of the stakeholders that are involved in some of these? Because as we talked, you know, Main Street came up as, um, a participant in some of these goals were, were a partner in or, or, I don't know. Uh, and, uh, if I wasn't sitting here, when would I learn that, that some things that Main Street works on are a priority of the city's?
I think that's been, Darrell and I have carried it back in the past, but I, I'm not saying we've done the best job, no. Honestly, I just assumed to summonate this like Lisa now since, uh. The city managers report from every other, from council meetings or our state and the city report, which is in large measure, I line is what, what has happened with regard to these goals out to the community. Uh, by the way, we put it on Facebook, it had eighteen hits, or eighteen, you know, a picture of a kitten would have done far better as far as engagement.
Well, we can try tagging a sarcastic meme to this.
Yeah, I think Greg's right, a lot of this, when he does a state of the city address, he kind of highlights pretty much what we've checked off on this with the pictures and. Other bullet points of how it happened and actually that we are making progress.
And I think it was four years ago that we started the goal. Kurt Andrews, Mike, Dick, and I were.
There were many people like spending the straight room putting this together, fun but painful.
No, it's a good list though. You need, you need goals to know what you're doing. Okay, so can we get a motion to adopt these goals?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Bill.
And then David's report here.
Was that a second? Okay, second by Tracy, I didn't know you kind of had your hand up instead of talking.
Adopt that we invented a little.
Yes, yep, yep, yes. Okay, so I got a first by Bill, second by Tracy, council discussion. See none, roll call vote, Jamie, please.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darrell Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shunellinas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Woski.
Aye. All right, thank you for that. On to, on to B, consideration of amendments to personnel policy manual related to overtime longevity and pay on legal holidays and/or city observed holiday dates. As recommended by Personnel and Finance Committee. Recommended action is a motion to approve the policy revisions and direct the city clerk slash human resources director to incorporate the changes into the existing personnel policy manual, something that we did tackle again last week. It seemed pretty basic, but Jamie gonna?
Yep, this is the, Jamie's last addition to a manual and she did a yeoman's job of revising the beginning of council lawyer.
All right.
Flora Nurse. Matters in court.
So really there's no, I mean, there's changes that we're proposing, um, so a lot of it is just clarifying what is current practice. Because it's not in the policy now and then these weird situations happen over holidays with overtime and stuff. And we just need something to point to so that payroll and department heads and employees know what to expect. So, let's just recap it really quickly, um, for overtime, that's a fairly lengthy section. What you see in red is what is changed, um, it's only adding one line indicating that when somebody earns double time, they have to take the pay and not get comp time. I don't know the exact reason for that, but it's been repeated so many times that, um, I think it's just a payroll processing function that makes that work that way. Longevity is no change really, um, it's more clear wording because it's been grandfathered out so long ago that there's no reason to have these tiers listed in there anymore. So everything that's in black with strikeout will go away, we'll replace it with the red. Um, and then the bottom paragraph in red is, um, it's added, but it's more so just clarifying language.
So we have some questions as to how it's calculated when employee exits the workforce on a time.
Right, so now there should be no question whatsoever. And then, uh, the holiday section. This is to add quite a bit of language, but it really just clarifies exactly what we would do in a variety of situations. Uh, the first section, um, in red, kind of in the middle of the page, talks about what happens for pay in holidays, on holidays that we are. On days that we are observing as holidays. So if, say, Christmas and Christmas Eve are on Saturday and Sunday, like they were this last year, this is what we are talking about would happen on Friday and Monday. Because we are observing the holiday on those days. And then the section below talks about what we would do if they had to actually come in at work on the legal holiday, which is not the day we are observing the holiday. So.
And in either case, you're getting time and a half until you hit eight hours, right?
Yes.
Or hours where if you go beyond eight, then you're double timed.
And only in day, only in situations where an employee would be working eight hours or more or whatever their normal work day is. Um, then they would get the opportunity to use their holiday time off on a different day. Questions?
Came up big time this year because Christmas and New Year's fell on Sunday.
Hi, this is my boss.
Did you know that was you? I think I have it.
No, I look for it.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion on this.
Stop me.
Thank you, Scott, the second thorough, thank you very much, any council discussion on this? See none, we'll put it to a roll call vote, Jamie?
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darrell Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shunellinas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Woski.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Congratulations.
All right, then on to C, set special meeting for action on playground equipment bids. Staff request special meeting on Monday, February thirteenth at six P M. I guess we could start with, uh, maybe showing a show of hands as to who can make that thirty one on time into a lead.
If the bids are clean and we're doing, by the way, we're doing this because it's out for bid now. We, we aren't, because of when we started and got the final word from the city attorney on needing to do, not letting him, but needing to do sealed bids. We aren't gonna have them in time to act on them on the sixth, their next regular meeting. We do know that, uh, Northland, uh, the supplier of the Little Tykes commercial playground equipment that we specified. Has guaranteed their pricing through a date that I'm sorry, I forget, that is before the February twenty meeting. So, um, uh, in order to, we believe to optimize pricing and we hopefully will have more than one bid, but, uh. Any contractor bidding monitor is gonna have to buy their equipment through an authorized Little Tykes distributor, which is Northland in Wisconsin. Uh, we're gonna need a special meeting, should be, again, if the bids are clean and there aren't any unusual circumstances, uh, should take all of ten minutes. It's a budgeted item. But, uh, I told Mike, I said, I think this is a big enough project, council, at least a quarter can come together. So, so you can adjourn by eight o'clock, yeah, show of hands, six, six o'clock.
And six o'clock on Monday the thirteenth.
All right, one, two, okay. That is plan commission night and frankly, uh, Adam's plan commission, if he's needed across the hall, uh, to make a forum fine. If not, I don't expect a lot of controversy on this side. Thank you.
We could crash the plan.
Enjoy your mother.
Good stuff happening there.
Looking for a motion to adjourn. Bill, second, second by Scott. Sorry, that's how I heard it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Jamie, best of luck to you. You can still stay.